I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 10th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Welcome back, everybody. Summer's not quite over. We can hang on to a few more hours, but I know everyone up here is eagerly looking to opening seven schools, hopefully with very smooth running buses on Thursday. It's been a great summer. It has been a busy summer. The room was pretty empty when we last met in the summer, so if you haven't met Dr. Adley and seen that I have a new pal sitting next to me, this is Dr. Adley. We thought we'd change it up a bit, and it's been great so far. So, we were looking for a chock full year, but certainly glad that Dr. Adley is at the helm. For the Board, I will say, at the last OPC meeting, the first selectman is looking for a town motto. She would like all Boards to weigh in on their thoughts for a town motto, so I throw that idea out to you, and then maybe it'll appear on agenda soon. I'm sorry?
She wants values or a town motto?
I believe it was town motto that she said, but town motto, you can work values into that as well, but just to get you all thinking, we'll go with that. I believe with the celebrations coming up, she's looking for input from all Boards, and she would like it before the next election, she said, so you'll see it on agenda, but get your thinking caps on. And I would also just like to say thank you to this Board. It was a very busy summer, and many of you made yourselves as available as you could, given all the schedules, so thank you for that. We had convocation on Tuesday, which Dr. Adley may speak to, but it was a very, very powerful day. Dr. Adley certainly energized our staff, and so it was another great time to have you there and to see all of Central Office together, and the teachers excited was very exciting. So with that, I will turn it over to public comment. It has been a quiet group lately, guys, and I will move to the Superintendent's report.
So, good evening, everyone, and I begin to see familiar faces here, which is nice. I want to thank the staff for all their preparations, the Central Services staff and all the auxiliary staff and support staff who have prepared for schools to get started. And I'd also like to stand a very words of appreciation to my community members. Many of you have spent some time with me, so thank you for that, and many, many more have extended a very warm welcome to Darien, and I begin to feel very much at home. We did kick off with convocation, and that was a wonderful event, because now staff are back, and we look forward to the first day of school when our children and students return. But again, on behalf of my wife and I, Pamela, thank you for the very warm welcome to the community. We're thrilled to be here. I was actually proud to represent Darien recently, last Wednesday, and delivering the welcome back address to all the superintendents in the state of Connecticut. That was Dr. Cardona's welcome back, Commissioner's welcome back to school for superintendents. So, Dr. Cardona is the new Commissioner. I'm glad to share that he will be visiting our school district in October.
Okay.
So, we look forward to hosting him early October, and we'll share more information about that. This evening, just as a wee reminder, we'll formally endorse the appointment of two administrators in the district. Our community members are aware of this, and as is the Board, because they've approved it, but we offer congratulations to Dr. Garan Mullen as the interim principal of the Royal Elementary School. We also congratulate and welcome to Darien Mark Mazzone on his appointment as assistant principal at the high school. And I just want to remind people that our Director of Finance and Operations, Richard Rule, will join the district on September 3rd, next Tuesday. So, believe me, I'm glad to see him. But I do appreciate Patty, all of her help in terms of what she's done in the transition. She's been phenomenal, but it'll also be nice to welcome our new director. I want to thank Dr. De Silva for all of her efforts in putting together sort of Herculean effort for professional development. I know my two other colleagues have participated in that and planned alongside her, but that is a huge effort to put together so many professional development opportunities over the course of the past week, and she's done a phenomenal job of it. We started off with the ministry retreat on last Tuesday and Wednesday. We went to Chelsea Peers. I thought, great, my goodness gracious. I mean, that's quite the place, and it was a wonderful opportunity, certainly for me, actually. She had planned some team building, and that was a nice opportunity for me to engage with people on a different sort of level. We also conducted some professional development around case study work, technology, feedback, human resources, and special education, provided some workshops. We also did a lot of preparation for the new teacher administrator preparation program and the platform for that. And then we rounded her up with a few calories of the Milk Mobile for lunch, which about just do you in for the day, but it was a great couple of days. We welcomed our new staff to their orientation on Thursday and Friday this past week. At the time, we had about 42 new staff who actually participated in the orientation, so those were a lot of onboarding sort of activities, as you might expect, but we have a wonderful group of new staff joining us, very passionate, very skilled. It's been a joy, actually, this past couple of weeks, this past week in particular, to really see the skill and the talent of the staff that we have here is really, really evident. I had an opportunity today to go around professional development, really top-notch, in the way people approach adult learning, professional learning. It seems that kids can excel and perform at high levels in all aspects of the curriculum here, athletics also, but all aspects of the academic curriculum, and that's wonderful to see. We did have convocation, which Tara said, and I appreciate, we had some parents here, actually, to invite more next year, if we had, no reason why not. But I just wanted to mention one thing that happened, which was Chief Osborne is retiring after about 35 years, so we had an opportunity to say goodbye to him, a small goodbye at the convocation, but also want to pass on, in the short time that I've been here, he's outreaching a number of ways to me. I want to appreciate that and recognize that, and I'm sure on behalf of the Board, he has worked collaboratively and supportively with our schools, our administrators, our kids, our staff members, from school safety to SROs to everything in between. So, anybody who's doing 35 years, particularly in law enforcement, deserves to be recognized, so we pass on our best to Ray. He leaves the town of Bleed this week?
I don't know if he wants everyone to know, but Thursday's his last day. Now you know.
The first day is obviously Thursday, and we look forward to that. Kindergartners will ride the bus on Thursday, or sorry, Friday, I think they're doing the Friday, so I'll join the kids on the bus for Friday, see what that, I'll take the shortest kindergarten route there is. But we look forward to that. Transportation has been published on the website and the paper, so on and so forth. I ask for a wee bit of patience, it's not untypical in the district, the first week or so, to work out some kinks with transportation, so we beg your indulgence, just a wee bit as we work some of those out, but the schools are up and ready. Mike's done a great job getting the schools ready, so we're very much ready to receive the kids, and we're very much excited. You know, we know all kids come with hope and aspirations to do well, and we look forward to inspiring them throughout the year. Open Houses Elementary, all the elementary is September 5th, that'll be right upon us next week. The middle school starts on the 12th and runs through the 17th, and the high school, I believe, is on the 19th. So, it doesn't take long for the school system to get right into full motion and for the roller coaster to start, but I can tell you the staff and I are tremendously looking forward, anticipation to receiving your children. So, thank you.
So, I will take a moment of the Chair's personal privilege just to echo those comments about Chief Osborne. He has been a consummate professional during my term as Chair, and certainly a resource, so 35 years of service should be recognized, and all his years of service and wisdom have been appreciated, certainly by this Chair, and I know the ones that have come before me, and I know I probably speak for the whole Board in thanking him for his service for the town of Darien. With that, I will move on to the approval of minutes. It is requested that the Board approve the following minutes, and we will take them individually, because I know different people are at different meetings. Minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on July 29th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Burke and Mr. Dunneen, all in favor? And that is Mrs. McCammon, Mr. Burke, Mr. Dunneen, and myself? Okay? And then minutes of the special meeting held-
I was abstaining, because I was abstaining as an actuary.
Yeah, abstaining, yeah, sorry. Minutes of the special meeting held on July 29th, 2019. May I have a motion to approve? Mr. Burke, Mr. Dunneen, all in favor? Mrs. McCammon, Mr. Burke, Mr. Dunneen, Mrs. Stein, any objections? Any abstentions? Mr. Brown and Mrs. McNamara? Minutes of the special meeting held on August 13th, 2019. May I have a motion to approve? Mr. Burke and Mrs. McNamara, all in favor? And that's Mrs. McNamara, Mr. Burke, Mr. Dunneen, and myself. Any objections? Any abstentions? Mr. Brown and Mrs. McCammon. Thank you very much. And are there any Board Committee reports this evening? Seeing none, and I know the Oxbridge Building Committee is on the agenda, so we'll look to hear about that from then. We will move on to presentations and discussion. First up, presentation and discussion on the revised educational specifications for the Oxbridge Elementary School. Dr. Adley.
I think Duke's going to lead us off.
So, I'll kick it off. The Oxbridge Building Committee has been very busy over the course of the summer with regular meetings, and then also the Site Design Committee meeting has been meeting. Four meetings took place, each on average about four hours, going over the overall design elements of the new elementary school. Fosher was at all of them, Dr. Adley, Laura Straighton, various people were there during the meetings that added to the value of it. The concept was great. SLAM has been incredible to work with.
Duke, could you mic him?
Nope. SLAM has been incredible to work with and the professionals that they bring to the table. I think Dr. Adley and Dr. Fosher will get into some of the specifics and some of the changes that we're presenting to you to be reviewed in terms of the overall ed specs. Those changes came about through going through literally space by space and not even looking at what the school should look like or where it should be placed, but looking at, here's the academic area, here's the administrative area, here's the cafeteria, what uses do we want, how do we want it to flow, what do we want it to feel like, what do we want it to look like? And once we went through that, which was just an exercise of boxes up on a wall in terms of number of classrooms, number of meeting rooms, number of spaces, and then once the decision was made as to what those spaces should look like, feel like, how we want them to be used, they started putting them together in what the school would look like and how the school would flow. And Luke and his team were instrumental in talking about their feel for the school, a lot of input from folks around Luke's team and the school. So, the basic categories that drove the Site Design Committee meetings were six of them, the school program, academics and services, the building use and operations, site traffic, parking and safety, which is the building siting, construction schedule and phasing, construction phasing and duration of project, cost, neighbors, the building siting and the construction phase and the impact on neighbors, and then the sixth was fields, playgrounds, and outdoor learning, which goes into play with site zoning, security, and monitoring. The committee met last week, and an overall concept was approved by the committee. The ed specs here, the changes that we'll go through, really come out of working to design and learn what we need in the school. One example is, we had one psychologist's office, we now have two psychologists, so we had to add another office. Another example is the health area. We increased the square footage of the health area. We hadn't taken into consideration in the original ed specs that we had moved the ELP program into the school, so we needed more space for health services. So, different things like that. The title of the area, the square footage originally, and the change and the reason is listed in a spreadsheet here that we can go through. But overall, we're on track. The next presentation to the State to get approval and get on the construction grant authority list in December is scheduled tentatively right now for September 18th. We'll be back up there presenting the final ed specs to the State, and then we'll move into schematic design of the building. So with that-
I have to say, it's been wonderful to come whenever we're in the sort of final stages of planning this beautiful building. Mr. Fosher, you're very lucky, and the staff is very appreciative, it's tremendous to see it come together. Mr. Lynch has been there, Luke's been there, Duke's been there, and various members of the committee, obviously, and it's just been wonderful to be a part of that. So, I have three documents for the Board this evening. One is just a summary of the educational specification revisions. One is a dense copy of all of the revisions as reflected, and the third one is an exhibit, a sort of spreadsheet that sort of summarizes the changes in a spreadsheet sort of format, just noting the actual changes. So with that, I'll speak to a couple of things. I won't read everything, because I think you can certainly go through those, but I'll give you the sort of big picture. Certainly Luke is able to speak to issues that perhaps I'm not, or if I stray somewhat, Luke and Duke can correct me here, but some of the big ideas was, so some of the square footage has changed to some of the small, I'll call it the smaller spaces, special education, talented gifted areas, school psychologists, some of those intervention areas have all been made to be the same sort of size, because I think the thought process has been, over the years, we tend to change these around, and if they're all the same, they're a wee bit, they're more adaptable to the change in the future, so I think that seems to be a reasonable context. You'll see square footage is changing in a number of these. Essentially, that's sort of kind of what it represents. There was a change to the music room. Instead of one music room and one big storage area, it was split into two instrumental music rooms with storage distributed in those classrooms. That was felt to be more operationally sound as to the way to do it, because the other way was just not as smooth an operation. Another area was really the combined lunchroom and common room, which has been separated. And addition to having a large gymnasium, like a middle school size gymnasium, one of the concerns was, can we get everything in, can we get the whole school in for performances and so on? Now, you can't by seat-wise, even with that large gymnasium, but we did ask the fire chief, is this, would we be able to put people in? Everybody, when they come to these performances, I'm speculating, because I haven't been there yet, but some people stand, right? And the kids sit down, and if parents were to be in and the kids were sitting on the floor, would that be appropriate if that was the case? And we did get that blessing. So that's another change you'll see there. You'll see changes to, Luke gave up some space in his principal office, Mike gave up some space or increased spaces here and there for some storage. So those, an entrance lobby, a small entrance lobby was to be added, and a delivery area expanded. That's the main sort of like big picture, that gymnasium being bigger, right? A middle school gymnasium, and it's actually a middle school basketball court. Those are the big picture things. Look, I don't know if I've left anything out there, Duke, I don't know if I've left anything out, but those, to me, are the major changes that are reflected in the document.
And I think the value add, and I thank Mike Lynch too for all his input too, and Katie Lubin, who represents, I think, the parents and is on the PTO there, has been instrumental in all of this, and Luke, but I will say that from the original ed specs that Luke and his team spent an incredible amount of time on, these changes come about through working with the professionals that have built schools. So if you look through this list, most of it is an increase in square footage, because while we think we know what we're doing because we have these schools and we're operating these schools, you know, standards have changed, lessons are learned from these folks that have built these schools in the past, so it was a little bit of an educational approach for us too, and a lot of these were recommendations from the professionals along with the folks that are actually using the building. There's always a conversation around storage and never having enough storage, so that was really a topic of conversation. Conversation around cubbies in the classroom, outside of the classroom, there's different trains of thought there in terms of the look and the feel of the school. Spaces where students can gather and meet outside the classrooms in hallways for group meetings and conversations and break time and stuff like that. So, you know, we're trying to build what the next school should look like, should we build future schools down the road, and build the right school for our students. And we've got a lot of support from the State. The State has been pleased overall with our approach with the ed specs, but there are guidelines that they look at, and that's what we continue to work with them on.
So I know that, because I was at the State Department for another project before I came here, and I mentioned that, oh, you'll be here for a part of Darien, because of how impressed they were with the project, but they do have changed rules now that all these ed specs have to be modified by the Board of Education, and they need the superintendent 's support. You should note that really the money in this doesn't really change, in fact, shouldn't really change, because once you submit that, it doesn't, you can't really increase the project financially, so these changes aren't going to result in a big increase, they can't.
I think it's a good point that you made in that the process we went through during the summer, where the community did not really take a break, and we worked around a lot of vacation schedules, in that the State does not want you to come back, leave, come back, leave, come back, leave. The State wants us to come back up there with kind of what our final ed specs are. They may be tweaked through the process, once we get into more schematic design and start looking at construction drawings, but they want the overall concept and size of the school delivered one time. So, this will be that one time since we submitted the application to the State at the end of June with our original ed specs.
So, just as a reminder, statutorily, we have handed off design, building placement, building look to the building committee, and they are doing a great job. I've been able to be at some of those meetings, and I'll tell you, they are working hard and long hours on this, so it is certainly commended. And Mr. Lynch, I think you've been at all of those, and as has Dr. Fosher and Dr. Adley since he came to the district, so it's very appreciated. I think what's before us is any time an ed spec is changed, we need to approve the educational impact of that and the change. So, are there questions on the ed specs? And we can take those now. Also, this will be up for, and Mr. Dunneen, correct me if I'm wrong, this will be up at our next meeting for approval on September 10th, because they go back to the State on the 18th. So, questions tonight, and we'll have another look at it on the 10th as well. Mrs. Stein?
I just had a question on the DLC, spreading the classrooms throughout the building. We had just heard from Mr. Lynch in the spring, one of the things we did, I believe, at Hinley was make those classrooms closer together. So, I just want to understand what the reasoning is to spread them out at Oxbridge.
So, the logic for the DLC kind of classrooms across the school is that we want them in the neighborhood houses, so the concept is basically we're moving towards grade levels being sort of clustered in the design of the new school, so that you could have a first grade cluster, a second grade cluster, and so on. And there was been a thought to potentially increase the total number of DLC classrooms as the new school gets built, and to then have those classrooms adjacent to those neighborhood schools.
Madam Chairperson? Can I just mention a number six, even though the superintendent tried to squeeze in four psychologist offices? Duke expanded that, so it's actually changed from one to two. It's actually one to two. It says from two to four, but there's actually two psychologists in-
There's a psychologist in ELP as well, so are there two or three, or four?
I believe there was two.
It's two school psychologists. The ELP psychologist is still an FTE, so that's not a change in the ed spec, because your initial ed spec still has a location for that psychologist. So, I think Dr. Adley's done a nice job of kind of organizing just the changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other Board questions? Mrs. McNamara?
Just wanted to clarify and to confirm, with the 35, 69 square foot change, no financial impact or minimal?
Not as of yet, no. It's all kind of the cost and all that type of stuff is kind of the next phase of it. But we're working within the amount that the RTM has approved, the $63 million.
Okay.
So, that's kind of the budget that we're working within. So, there's definitely changes in the costs based on the different sizes of rooms and stuff like that, but where we're giving and where we're taking, we're still working within the parameters of the cost that we came up with.
Thanks, Duke.
And I would also add that there's been an attempt to be judicious with the spaces for office spaces, administrative spaces, so that the classrooms and places for learning can be the proper size for future proof.
Right. I saw some went down and some went up, clearly.
And so again, just so we're clear, and I appreciate the clarification, Mrs. McNamara, in terms of financial impact when we make our decisions, that won't be before us, but that will be before the building committee. Mrs. McCammon, do I see your hand?
Yep. Luke, can you talk to the common room gymnasium strategy and the 800 square foot lobby, and how those, how you're planning to use them and how they compare to the other schools, please?
Yeah, this is a learning curve in working with the architects. The 800 lobby is basically, we didn't specify that square footage in the ed spec. We sort of just thought, well, you build a lobby, and that's a given. It's not a given. You have to actually specify it, so that's more of a technical feature to make sure that the 800 square foot's accounted for. That lobby would be the main entrance for students and families coming in. The conceptual design that we're currently walking off of has basically one main entrance point. That would be for safety and security reasons, it'd be an upgrade from the various doors and entry points we have in the current facility, and so that entry space would be just a welcoming area, a place for buses to unload, students to enter, and so on. The common room was another kind of learning curve for us. The initial ed spec basically specified a room that was large enough to house all the students and faculty at once, to which the architects had a bit of a chuckle, because they said, well, to do that, it would have to be, I'm going to make up the number, but some enormous square footage, like that room in of itself would have to be 30,000 square feet. They said the best practice here is to really look at, how do you link a common area, this common room concept, to an existing large square foot classroom or room? So that's why the concept of kind of increasing that gym size, putting a common room adjacent to it, and making kind of a great gathering place is where we're going. And again, as Dr. Adley's pointed out, getting the blessing from the fire marshal about our current practice, which is, we have all of our current students sitting on the floor of the common room, which is well under the square footage already, so it's an upgrade going forward. That's the thinking.
Jill, it's a great question, and it's a lesson learned. We spend a lot of time and have gone back several times to Token Eek in terms of lesson learned, on top of the other schools that we've toured throughout the state. And if you look at Token Eek, they built a gymnasium and a cafeteria, put a stage in the middle of it.
Yeah.
So, which is really a poor design concept versus putting, you know, a stage at the end, and if need be, put a wall that could partition the two rooms. So, we also are working with the State, and the State does not look favorably upon huge common rooms for gatherings of 500 people, and the State does not want to hear that you want to use it for community use, you know? Although, you know, our goal here is in the overall design of the building, that the gymnasium and some of the common areas can be used for community use and on the weekends with the school and the academic areas being easily secured and closed off.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. McNamara? I'm looking for the actual number, but I noticed that the maintenance storage decreased, and I just want to make sure, to put it out there, that we're all good with that.
Well, Mr. Lynch is good with it.
Exactly.
Because you added the delivery area, right?
Right. The delivery was, I just wanted to make sure we are seeing that in other schools, so I just want to make sure.
Part of it is, I'm sorry.
So I just, I'll have Mr. Lynch ask it, and then I just want to make sure we direct the questions to the superintendent, because he has to make the official sign up for the State now, so we need to hear his approval.
To whoever, I'd like to address that. Thank you.
The maintenance area that they specified would hold outdoor maintenance equipment, which we keep down at the garage at Ledge Road and bring to the site, so we need a little area for a couple of snow blowers and some ice melt compound, and that's it.
Okay, because it's less than what you originally put in, so that's why I want to make sure.
Yes, but we did want a larger shipping area, you know, receiving area, and because we've decentralized the custodial supply deliveries, and so we just sort of took 140 square feet from one and put it in the other.
Okay.
And we're good.
Thank you. Mrs. McCammon? Going back to the gym, why are we building a middle school sized basketball court? What's the thinking behind it?
So, I think the thinking behind it was that, A, it wasn't, it's not been specifically designed for community use, but if it can double up for community use, we were trying to do, or the committee was trying to accommodate this idea of a space for everybody to be able to fit in, right? And so that's the first thing. So when they expanded that, it came, the discussion came on the table, could it conceivably be an opportunity for community, even some of our high school kids, I believe some of the teams could possibly-
I believe some of the teams could possibly even use it if they had to. So it just expanded, was there an opportunity to expand that use? I have to say, having been accustomed to building like that and a basketball court in there, I think it maximizes the use of it. But it wasn't specifically built just for, I don't know, Y M C A or something.
And it was a strong recommendation from SLAM and something that they've seen and used throughout the state and other school buildings that's viewed a little more favorably from the state in terms of use of space.
And the final layer to that is there's another recommendation to put a partition between that large floor plan. And when we've risen to sections of 24 over the years, which a projection kind of supports could be where we're going, we often are running double gym periods. And so the current practice is effectively of one in the gym, one in the common room, or you pray for good weather effectively. So the hope is that this would also be adaptable and sort of future proof.
Any more questions?
Mrs. McCannan. Can I push on the art? It's just a small reduction in size, but I know art rooms tend to have a lot of equipment and materials and kids need a lot of space to spread out. So was there a philosophy behind that or was it just an economy?
I honestly think it was just working with the square footage with the state on the actual classroom sizes and finalizing for art rooms what that would typically be versus what would they actually put in there. I think it's a, honestly, I think it's a relative smaller adjustment. I mean, it's big enough, I guess, when you say like 200 square feet. But I believe it's in keeping with what, I think what they're trying to do is also package it to sell with the state with some of these modifications to the class sizes.
Yeah, we've been having an ongoing conversation with the architectural team about the way the state calculates their square footage should be about seats in the classroom. We've been having a very vigorous conversation about, well, we don't just do education seats anymore. So we want to make sure that that space can be adaptable, that the art room, to your point, could have a location for, if there's something future with, you know, sculpture or an art station that needs to be accommodated. So the square footage is still larger than the recommendation per the kind of however many number of kids you're projecting. So yes, it was basically, get that conversation with the architects and adjusting it to be within reality, I think.
So just to push or clarify on that a little bit, the, I appreciate that we are trying to meet the state standards in terms of reimbursement for the project. But what I need to hear from the superintendent and eventually we all need to approve is that you're comfortable with this? Educationally, the art room seems the appropriate educational size.
Yeah, well, there's another 180 square feet for the kiln and storage. So this is just a change to the actual square feet of the classroom so that, so you get a kiln and storage and everything else in it.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. McNamara.
You want a security monitor workstation, 60 square feet? Can you talk about where, why that number?
It's similar to what we've done in the other schools. It's the man trap.
Okay, so that's.
It's just standard.
I will say there has not been a full discussion about security for the building.
No, 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 just on the.
And it wasn't, there wasn't anything there in the original ed spec, much like the foyer. So we had a good conversation of security being done in the administrative area versus the man trap. There's some schools that do it differently. But, you know, we're leaning toward the system that Mike Lynch has been implementing in the schools and it's kind of a standard that we feel is a good security measure. So more, there's a security professional coming in and that'll all be hashed out and probably redesigned several times before the final schematics are done.
Perfect, okay, thanks.
Mrs. McCannan.
In the original specs, the 900 square foot, one through five classrooms also do include space for personal belongings, which I took to mean in many cases, cubbies on the inside. So while I have no desire to get rid of storage, I just wanted, my understanding was that 900 square feet was for personal belongings. And I just, I know we've added additional square footage in here for storage, so I just wanted to hear the thinking.
Just say that again for me, Jill.
So in the, in the original specs, where it says 900 square feet, it does include in the actual language.
What number are you on, Jill, sorry?
So looking at the, what number am I on?
Are you on the spreadsheet?
You're on the spreadsheet, Jill.
I'm actually in the middle of the specs.
Oh, in the document itself?
In the document itself, grade one through five classrooms, which is page 26.
So are you speaking to which change though?
The, okay. Just a minute, please.
Yep.
Typical classroom should have 900 square feet of classroom instructional space with additional storage.
Yes, yes. So, thank you. Number 19, we've actually added additional space throughout the building. But when I read page 25, 26, it does talk about including personal belongings. So I wanted to understand what that personal belongings means and whether or not that storage was already included in the classroom.
Well, if you look at the spreadsheet, that's the additional storage is, I guess it's ed spec page 47. Cubby backpace storage, we're adding storage in there. The discussion is ongoing as to whether that's in the classroom or outside of the classroom like Token Eek.
Right.
So there's additional storage being added.
Okay, so that 900 in the, in the one through five was not meant to include cubbies?
That's just instructional space.
I just want to be sure. I'm all for storage.
Never enough.
Any other questions on these ed specs? Okay, seeing that, we will move on and we will revisit this topic on our September 10th, yes.
If there's anybody who, you know, upon reflection, further reading, if you have any clarifying questions for me, please feel free just to forward those. Thank you.
All right, we, thank you very much, Dr. Forshaw. And thank you, do please extend our thanks to the building committee and all their hard work this summer.
I just wanted one more comment. I just wanted to thank the Oxbridge Building Committee. It's been, I think, phenomenal and thanks for all the leadership from the board, from Dr. Adley and the entire committee, I think, has been just stellar to work with these last few months and I anticipate that to continue. So thank you to them.
Thank you. We'll move on to the presentation, discussion and possible action on the proposed revised facilities use fee. Mr. Lynch, you're up.
Good evening again. What you have in front of you, the annual memo regarding our use fees, which we have a, you look at the charts, we have different tiers of groups that are allowed to use. Those are all based on state policies and policies that the Board of Ed's adopted. We survey neighboring districts that have published rates. Some of the districts don't. There's a combination of the town does some of the renting and some schools don't rent out very much of their facilities to the community. So this year coming up, based on where our fees are, we've decided to request an increase in the fees for the custodial maintenance and the, when people use Jeff D'Amio and the theater people, the small 2% increase which mirrors the collective bargaining agreements. That's pretty much it. Answer any questions anybody has?
Any questions on the facilities use fees? Miss McCannan, I can't tell.
Yeah, I think I have.
Do you want to look at it straight up?
I recall reading something about, yes. It says last, thank you, Mike. Last year, we proposed a gradual increase in the use sports fields, field, sports fees, field usage fees to offset the cost of parking control, which we don't supply unless requested. And that was part of why we had said there was going to be an increase that we're backing off on.
Yes, because we would be supplying people on overtime to help park cars on the weekends at the high school. And we don't, we were just doing it every weekend.
Right.
And we took that out last fall.
Right.
And if there's a large event, we supply it and charge the event.
Okay, so that's how we're recuperating the $200. That's what I was going to, thank you.
Mr. Lynch, can you talk a little bit about SchoolDude and how it's working?
Okay, so my administrative assistant, Sheila Flynn, she had used SchoolDude before in her other school district. And that was a module that we were not using, which was for tracking the rental of the facility. So she put it together and we started last fall. We started it in the spring and then we did it in earnest last fall. Every school has the calendar, all the secretaries are trained. People from the outside, you know, from the community, you know, the coaches or individual people that want to use something, they can go look at the calendar, see what's available and then they make an application. And so we check with them on, make sure they have their insurance. They get a listing of what they, you know, probable cost is going to be. And then once it's confirmed that they were using the facility, they're billed the next day. So it's not a matter of going down and handwriting invoices and stuff. They get a bill emailed to them the next day after they've used the facility. And the caveat is if you like to use the facility again, you have to pay this bill. So we've been able to just be a lot more efficient in, you know, tracking who uses our facilities. There were some people that were enjoying our facilities quite a bit, which, who's that guy? So we've curbed that. I'm sure there's still some, you know, but we've made a diligent effort to, you know, get most of the people that should be paying, paying. And they do, and they do it gladly. You know, because now everybody knows they're being treated the same. So it seems to work better.
Has it helped with some of our double booking concerns? I know at times.
It's eliminated a lot of the double booking. And because you look at the calendar and you see that, you know, the Y has, you know, fifth and sixth grade boys' basketball at Royal School, Monday, Wednesday evenings. So the Boy Scouts know they can't have the gym. They can have the common room, they can have the cafeteria at Royal. And so we're able to spread things out that way. So we're not losing groups, but we're able to effectively use our spaces better.
Great, it sounds a great plan. We heard about it last year, so I'm very happy to hear that.
It's working great. And so I just put the numbers in there so people could see exactly how well it's working.
Yeah, like when we find those kinds of efficiencies.
Little module cost $2,300 and it recouped, you know, whatever, $80,000.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, it's been great.
Mrs. McNamara.
Sort of related to this, as you're discussing the use of our facilities, what is our practice regarding booking something, canceling something? How does that work? I'm thinking of a hotel. I, what is our hotel policy for fields and crews?
We ask to be notified 24 hours in advance so we can, you know, cancel custodial or the theater people or maintenance people that are going to be there for the facility. There's no fine or anything like that. Probably with the exception of the sports fields, there isn't another group waiting to use.
I'm thinking of the sports field more particularly, but.
Yeah, and they, unless it's weather related, they don't cancel. They're there. I mean, the sports teams, they're always going to be there. You know, like say, say youth lacrosse is going to be on the center open. They may have three girls teams playing three other teams scrimmaging, going across the field sideways. Bad weather or there's testing or something like that going on, maybe it's only two teams playing. But it's still girls' youth lacrosse using the field.
Right.
And so, you know, it's not like the field's sitting empty now. We don't really have that.
But back in the scenario where it's in the building and if they don't give us notice within 24 hours, how does that affect part of your staffing or your custodians? I mean, is there, do we have a cost to us if someone cancels? I just want to make sure we're not incurring a cost with the staff who are planning to do a job.
Most of the, most of the school youths, we're there anyway.
Okay.
And so if we know that they're not showing up, like somebody won't come in early or somebody says, well, you know, I guess they're not coming, I'm going to go home. You know, so it doesn't really cost us anything. The groups that use the weekends in the buildings, you know, it's like the Boy Scouts with the Pine Wood Derby. Then I cancel that.
Okay, so it hasn't been a problem, right?
Theater group and stuff like that, no, not at all.
I just wanted to clarify what the problem is.
Any other questions on the proposed fee schedule? Okay, with that, can I entertain a motion to approve the proposed revised facility use fee schedule? Mr. Burke and Mr. Brown, all in favor? And that is unanimous? Thank you very much, Mr. Lynch.
Have a good night.
And tell Sheila we said thank you.
Yes.
We will move on to further discussion and possible action on the proposed 2019, 2020 district goals and objectives. Dr. Adley.
The district goals and objectives have been revised per the board at the last meeting. So they're really up for your consideration at this point. Those minor revisions have been made and are reflected in the document.
So why don't we take them in broad categories since we went through them each in a lot of detail last meeting? Does anyone have any questions on the Board of Education Superintendent of Schools goal? Mrs. McCannan.
We did go through this one last time and I thank you for that.
Yeah, fine.
I just wanted to understand two things a little better. One, your methodology, who, what are you doing to get to the 90-day plan? Who are you talking to? What research are you doing? And two, what are you planning to deliver to us so we know what to expect?
So essentially, I'll be, I'm going to actually present the plan to you. So at the next meeting, you'll get the actual plan, right? But it'll be, fundamentally, it'll be engaged in different constituents and thereafter then come back with probably a 90-day report type thing. Then with a recommendation for what the strategic plan should actually look like moving forward for the, to result in a board document and guiding principles for the next level of work.
Okay. Based on that, how did you decide, not specifically, but more generally, how did you decide? I know you're trying to keep with the format we've already been using and that's wonderful. But how did you decide what to prioritize in here in terms of what you did include?
Jill, just for the, this one goal or for, or for all of them?
Bigger picture, not specifically, all of them.
All of them?
Yeah.
Honestly, I asked my staff to collapse things, make connections. Less is more. I, they'll give me an honest opinion. Some of these, some of these goals that we have, I see as integral to their part of, if you weren't doing these goals, I'd be asking, what are your goals within your department? And I just see them in that category. So I did not want a lot of duplication. I did not want a lot of goals.
Right.
So I asked to keep the same format because having just arrived, I don't pretend to reinvent the wheel or suggest that there's a completely better way right up off the bat. But yet can we simplify it a little bit? That's an honest perspective I give them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And we'll move on to curriculum and instruction.
Sorry, one more.
All right, I'm just going to throw it out. Is there anybody else who has a question before Mrs. McCannan? And then I promise, I'll come right back to you.
Nope, nope.
Mrs. McCannan.
Who are the constituencies? When you say constituencies, who does that include?
Ourselves, public officials, community members, obviously, students, staff, everyone. This is a community venture.
Thank you. All done.
That's okay, you can have more. I just wanted to see if anyone wanted to jump in there. We will move on to curriculum and instruction. Any questions on that goal? Mrs.?
McNamara.
McNamara, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I know, I know. I apologize, I did not, I was not here for the last meeting, but I did watch the tape. On the first one, study the current exploratory model at MMS. I've got to be honest, when I read it first, I didn't understand what it was. When I listened to you explain it, it was very clear. So I'm just asking if there's a way in which this document, which is an important document guiding our district, is there a way in which, again, I don't like parentheses, as a goal. So is there a way in which you could restate your goal so it's clearer as to what you're hoping to do with this goal? Does that make sense?
So I think what I'm hearing you say is the definition of exploratory model wasn't clear, right? Because unless those of us, and in fact, exploratory model, the reason it's in quotes is because I'm not sure that that term came where it actually came from and we inherited it, at least I did back in 2015, that that was the type of model.
That's fair.
That described the program at the middle school. But I think what I'm hearing you say is when it comes to language such as that for the public's benefit, a definition or a definer would make it clear.
Right, you eloquently explained it when you went into detail, but if there's a way which you could capture what you said into this. So it is very clear and transparent to our public that it's an important message and area that we. that it's an important message and area that we could just make it clearer.
Perhaps a gloss or a footnote, something easy.
I can add a, I can add a definer within that same goal statement.
Or you're describing, you're looking into the electives or the not...
So just so I know what we're asking Dr. De Silva to do, you're looking to define the exploratory model, which has been the model at MMS, right? So we've gone a definition of what is the exploratory model.
Exactly. So if a parent picks up this document, it is not familiar what the exploratory in quote model is, what is it that we're trying to do?
Okay.
And you're looking at the elective or the woodworking and all...
It's the electives being offered.
Perfect. I think that would be clearer and I would appreciate it.
That's good feedback.
So could you approve, if we need to approve tonight, could you approve with that caveat that...
I'm sure you understand the message that if a layman or a parent picked this up, that they would understand what you're doing.
That's fair.
Okay.
All set.
Any other questions on curriculum and instruction? We will move forward to special education.
Business.
Oh, I'm sorry, business.
Squeeze, squeeze in there.
Sorry, it went faster than mine.
We'll go, we'll go to business.
I'm working multiple screens too. It's not only you.
Just a quick curriculum before we figure out business.
So while we get business up, Mr. Brown's going to go to curriculum.
So just really quickly, looking at STEM and some of the goals there, I just look at that and had the thought on some of the tools you need to actually be effective in learning in that way and, and the skills you're actually going to need to do some of these entrepreneurial and other things are listed out. And I'm going to go back to grammar and some of the other things that are there that aren't really part of STEM, but you probably need to have if you're going to be effective in terms of being a critical thinker and documenting what you're actually trying to produce and establish goals. So as we look through curriculum, I don't know if there's any thought on some of the pieces that need to go in as the building blocks, but I would certainly like to see some of that in terms of, say, you know, the actual underpinnings, especially in the grammar as we look at that. So we have, you know, we have here entrepreneurial, changemaker, communications, communications, obviously, if you're not an effective writer, then you're not going to be very effective at communicating what your goals are, or, you know, being an entrepreneur, being a leader. So I know STEM is obviously very focused on skill set these days, but I think to be effective there, there's maybe some of the more basic, more old-school, if you will, building blocks that need to be in place that perhaps have not been for a little bit. And I would like to see some of that perhaps thought about as we move through this process.
Okay. We do currently teach grammar K-12. It is taught differently at each of those levels. Last year, you may have remembered, the English department and the literacy department at the elementary school did share out their goals around grammar. There was actually a focus on grammar six to 12 last year. We actually had a staff developer that worked alongside our teachers. That work continues this year. It is foundational work, as you just said, for sure, that we would expect all of our students to be able to articulate themselves, certainly in, in written form and through their oral language as well. But it is part of our, our English Language Arts curriculum.
I don't think, I honestly don't, David, I don't think that the ideas are mutually exclusive. It's just that we're pulling out the STEM characteristics. So clearly to be able to function in the STEM arena, you've got to be able to communicate and so forth, the points you're making. It's just, I don't think they're just mutually exclusive ideas. It's just in fairness to the direction I give my staff, it's like, I don't want the kitchen sink in here. I understand the basic fundamentals.
I don't know anyone who enjoyed graphing sentences either, but to that point, you know, and again, some of this may have been done before I actually joined, but, you know, some of the discussions later in the year were tied about making grammar more meaningful. There was a sort of broad sort of definition as to what making grammar meaningful meant as opposed to actually more hardcore. And, you know, some of the work you did with the social emotion we saw was fantastic. There was great cross-references, there was great depth of information there. I'm not sure that we have that here, or if we do, I haven't seen it. Would love to see some of that. And so it's really just trying to really develop some of that great work you've done in some of the other areas in this area.
Thank you.
So is it, is it fair to say in terms of goals and objectives, kind of bridging the gap between what we're talking about, that the foundational learning, kind of the reading, writing, arithmetic, kind of is all foundational? And the goals we're seeing pulled out here are new work and, and new goals we're meeting this year without giving way on any of the old foundational... Old is the wrong word. The foundational learning for which we are committed to?
That would be accurate. And just to add to that, to Mr. Brown's point, those, the mindset characteristics are in some ways related to the, the word that we use in our field called STEM. So we wouldn't necessarily add all those other elements that you just described, but that is a part and an expectation of the scope and sequence that we do have in English Language Arts or foundational in mathematics and science. All of those pieces do need to come together.
Okay. And then so maybe for, especially as our newer board members come on, when we hear presentations like English or whatever, we can reference some of the foundational learning that goes on. And that would provide an opportunity in case you have questions to question it there. So that way your questions get out and, and the new goals are kind of brought forward. Does that seem like it'll meet the gap in between? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Business, Mrs. McHannan?
Nope. Still on curriculum.
All right. I don't know why we ever found business. Let's stay in curriculum.
No, I'm staying on, on the same thought that David brought up. Thank you for prompting this question. Just on the grammar part, if we're going to use an acronym, can we elaborate as to what the acronym means again? So people, I think we all pretty much know what STEM is, but I think it's, we should put it and then you can put it STEM and then refer to it as STEM going forward.
All set.
That would be grammatically appropriate. But I just ask, why STEM and not STEAM? Was there a reason? Is that a deliberate decision?
It was a deliberate decision. This goal really came out of a couple of different pieces. We were looking at our STEM program in general alongside the new graduation requirements. We were looking at STEM alongside the work that's being done with Project Lead the Way in the middle school. We were looking at STEM alongside the next generation's science standards, alongside the work that's happening in our library media program. And together, we looked at integrating all of those different pieces and trying to make a connection rather than having all of these different elements that we're not making a natural connection for our students. So we wanted to find opportunities to take the, really the, the information technology literacy's curriculum and integrate it in to other, those other content areas.
Okay.
So for those people sitting in the audience, the STEAM is the arts rolled in, right? And you probably, but you could probably make up another acronym by adding in something else at the end of it. It just goes on and on and on, but it's a good, it's a good point to note and just with that focus is, it's just, but it doesn't mean that we're not focused on the arts, clearly.
No, exactly. Because you hear those terms used sometimes interchangeably. And if we can elaborate what STEM is, I think that would, again, be helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions on curriculum? I'm scared to say business, so.
Just for the sake of this mouse, this is actually business right here. And there's, the only thing above here is the word business. And I just can't get them both there.
Well, it's okay because business is relatively short and the reason is we're just hiring a new director of finance and business, right? And honestly, the goal itself is really...
Get him here.
Get him here and get his thoughts on what we're doing well and what we might do a bit differently. So that's, that's the long and the short of that.
All right. So I hesitate to ask, but I will. Any questions on business? All right. We will look forward to Rich joining. Okay, Mrs. McHannan?
No, I'm sorry. This is more of a theoretical question. As we have this new individual joining us...
Yes.
After we've approved this, is it appropriate at all for that individual to look at this and we look at it again before he has a chance or we just let him roll with it for the year?
I think the way, I think, Christine, the question, the way it's framed gives him a lot of latitude.
Okay. All right, fair enough. I just wanted him the opportunity, but he can present to us if he finds other issues that come up.
I do think in terms of defining the work, it would be nice that when he gets here that we do get some sort of definition of what he decides is a priority.
He could do it verbally.
Sure.
You know, but...
That's fine. Thank you, Jill.
We will move on to special education. And Shirley's here. Mrs. Klein's here. Any questions on special education? Seeing none? All right. We will move on to community. I'm sorry. Mrs. McHannan?
Again, I apologize for the, just your first bullet, conduct an ELP, Early Literacy Instruction Program Review. Why?
I believe last time we spoke about Laura was given a grant from the Connecticut State Department of Education. She's actually working with Margie Gillis in literacy program. We're looking at markers that might be identifiable in early childhood that might have dyslexic behaviors. So we're trying to align our multisensory reading program to come back to ELP and look at markers or other ways of really addressing children both developing typically and with special needs to really looking for those markers. So this year we're doing a self-study. The grant really also allows training to come in three times over the year to really look at new informal assessments and consideration of formal assessments to looking at developing readers.
Okay. Further questions on special education?
Well, can we just comment on that? That's pretty exciting. I mean, that, that's right, because we haven't done, my understanding is, is that the industry is just beginning to understand what, at that age, what dyslexia looks like. Very often dyslexia is diagnosed closer to late elementary school. So this, I think this is the kind of thing we want to be doing, which is leading the charge with how we think about learning and teaching.
And we're also aligning with our general education population at the same time. It is, you're right, Jill, it is early on. It is a commitment from the Department of Education in Connecticut also to look at those early markers and to really give teachers the skills to really identify those opportunities for early learning. So when we have children exploring language, when we have language boards in rooms, when we have multisensory, whether it's a sandbox or a rice box, or, or looking at different ways to release, you know, provide students with different ways and modalities of learning, we're just starting that earlier on. We're actually assessing from our teachers and our PD today in ELP of what they're currently doing and what we want to consider as we move toward the year in a self-study.
So I do think we heard a great update last time, and it is, to Mrs. McCannan's point, very exciting. So if we have to repeat it, it bears repeating again because I think a lot of families will be served from it.
I guess to that point then, I, I'm struggling with this as a goal. I think it's phenomenal and I think in some ways we're burying the lead that what you're trying to do is so important. You're using the word marker several times and I'm not sure I see the word marker here. Is there a way in which you could elaborate and, and capture this work a little bit more in the goal?
I think because we're doing a self-study, we intentionally made it broad. I think as Laura reports out this year of where we are in our self-study, what we're looking at and what we're utilizing, we'll be able to elaborate on it.
Okay.
So I prefer to stay with the broadness and then as we go on through the year, really report out to the board what we're finding, what our findings are and what our goals are in the future.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions on special education? Thank you very much. We'll move on to human resources. Any questions on human resources? Seeing none? And I swear I'm going to say it because it makes me raise my hand. Mrs. McCannan?
This is sort of a hybrid question to Susie and Marge, but I had a question from a constituent asking me about social emotional learning and how our teachers are doing, given, you know, the focus on security, given their need to teach, to be more sophisticated in order to actually teach social emotional learning. So I, I might be throwing it out more as a statement than I am a question, and I'm not sure that it ultimately would be solved in this document today, but I, I think it's a valid question. I think it's something we would want to be managing for and we do want our teachers to be just as healthy socially emotionally as we want our kids to be. So...
So you stole my thunder from my complication because, as I said just after, you can't have schools that are socially emotionally situated for children if you can't, if it's not the same for, for your staff.
Yeah.
So that's a big part of it. And, uh, social emotional learn over the years have become many things, character education, all sorts of things, right? It's all about developing relationships with people primarily, first of all. I'm hopeful that we're off to a good start of that, but the actual building of capital of the staff incorporates all of that. It's a bigger topic, so to speak, and I appreciate you, actually very much appreciate you advocating in that way. But those, that's exactly what we're trying to do collectively.
A lot of work around being a balanced teacher, both their physiological health, their emotional health, has been efforts throughout the years that I've been here, continue to be. And I, I do think that many of the approaches that we take with our students, whether it's energizers, mindfulness techniques, yoga in the classroom, some of the very simple things such as Go Noodle, music, do make a difference for our teachers as well because they do need to, whether it's from some of the reasons that you've just described, Jill, or quite frankly, just the many pressures that come from being a teacher in the year 2019 and everything that comes with that. I think we do need to take a step back and find opportunities to support our teachers. They really are our most valuable asset. It's how we started our day today was, was thinking about them and validating the work that they do with our students because it's hard work.
Thank you. We'll move on to community.
So I recognize that I slipped this one in and I said that the superintendent would relatively do it and with collaboration from my colleagues here. You can never over-communicate and I think this is a, a good time since we're doing the entry plan anyway, this is a good time to solicit what does our communication look like, felt like? There's always areas of improvement, particularly around communication. So we'll have our constituents chip in as to how we might do that and how we might, we've already started it with new website and different things and, but I think there's still work that we could do and with a little bit of input. We've got people who are very bright people who can tell us what to do, can help us with it maybe. So, pretty straightforward.
Any questions on community? I would only add the more community building we do, I think the better. And so I think that's a welcome goal and work, I think, I'm quite happy to see it slipped in, let's put it that way. We'll move on to facilities. Mrs. McCannan?
Not listed in, it could fall under security, but not listed in here is the portables. I just would love to see sort of a plan that probably incorporates security but talks to what we need to do with our facilities over the next five to 10 years. And we have ensured the safety and security and we have, you know, a permanent solution for the school district's storage needs, but what are the five things we're going to do in the next, you know, five years? I don't know. What are the seven things we're going to do in the next five years so that we can plan and roll it out, you know, as we need to?
So I think part of that would also roll into the facilities committee that I think the board has, right? So my intention would be, like, I'll be honest, I was just shocked we have so many portables still. Now, I knew that before I came, but I'd love, like I just publicly said, I'd love to find a way to get, to replace those things all over the district for a number of reasons. But I think, I think that discussion's going to come out with the facilities capital planning part.
So I think, and I've spoken with Dennis Maroney, the facilities chair, he is, you know, ready to go and begin these conversations. Certainly we have a plan, though it has taken a fair amount of work to effectuate the plan. And so the question is at what point do we want to relook at the plan and do we want to come up? But I think the board has certainly made a commitment that once getting Ox Ridge on the way, tackling the issue of portables was, was the next, the next priority. So Mr. Maroney is been, you know, very in touch with this and very wanting to move forward So, Mr. Maroney has been, you know, very in touch with this and very wanting to move forward on this. So, without him here tonight, I would just like to defer to him in getting his committee together because everything will come back to the board. But I think your sentiment is shared amongst most of the board that, and sounds like with the superintendent, that, you know, where we're going as part of the strategic plan, and then certainly that portables are an issue of priority to tackle.
I think it's big enough to show up here, some of it, but...
The only reason it didn't show up here, at least, and Mike's sitting here, or at least one of the reasons, I just didn't want to simplify it without having had a real look to strategically look at it. I'm being a wee bit flippant this evening just with my comment, but yes, I'm surprised, but I just didn't want to put it in there as a... That's just too simplistic. I'd like to look at it in a more sophisticated, strategic way.
I would agree with that. So, that sounds great. Thank you.
Mrs. McComber.
Picking up on that same point, and I appreciate your comments, but I am concerned by its complete omission. So, is there a way, it either could be built into action steps? I mean, we have school storage needs, which is also something which will be addressed by the Facilities Committee, which we state as an action step appropriately. So, I am concerned that it's not even stated somewhere. I'd like to see it.
But it has been stated in the overall conversation of the Facilities Plan, and the goals that were outlined with the building of Ox Ridge was a phased approach, which I agree with you all, has to be defined more. But once the school was started, the plan would then be looked at, the elimination of the portables and what building or renovation needed to be done to those individual schools. So, I mean, that's been discussed continuously through all the Facilities Committee meetings.
I think we all agree. No, I all agree.
That's a goal that's been stated any number of times.
But I think to put it in here identifies our commitment to it. And it could be an action step as part of safety. I just don't know why we wouldn't put it in if we put in storage needs, like I'm struggling with.
These are annual goals, 19 to 20. And I do think, and again, I'm gonna quote Mr. Maroney, who couldn't be here tonight, but I think part of what he touched upon last meeting was giving Dr. Adley the freedom in his strategic goal to kind of go out wide stroke and see what he could come back to us with. So, my only concern, I don't think anyone's backing... My take on it, as one of nine up here, is I don't think anyone's backing away from the commitment of tackling portables, but also wants to do it in the best, most effective way. And so, I'm not sure having a line in here does that, rather than letting Dr. Adley report back to us on his 90-day review of kind of what he sees for the district. That's just my thought on it.
I disagree, that I think we should put it in there to keep it front and center because it is important. And I think we can put it as an action step if it's part of ensuring safety and analysis of our portables or commitment to our analysis, and it can continue for the following year as we do have some other goals. We have a box for going forward. That's just my one opinion.
So, if there's a motion...
I would vote to second that, and the reason I would do so is because we had a long... Couple of conversations about putting up bollards or security gates at the high school and changing traffic patterns. That was incorporated, so I don't know why, you know, open spaces controlling the actual properties during the day. I don't know why looking at portables in that sense, not simply as a facilities and building development and useful life conversation, but as a security conversation, I think probably is something we should be looking at as well.
So, I would need a motion, if there's a motion to amend these.
Well, are we putting this whole thing back? I thought we're...
No, we're supposed to vote on these tonight, so if you'd like to amend it. I'm not sure there's agreement yet to amend it. So, if you'd like to amend it, I'd like to give the board an opportunity to make that amendment.
Is it, to your point, and I think to Tara's point, it's all good conversation. Is it better to do it more broadly in that have a goal to continue to update and invest in the long-term capital plan? Within that capital plan, we've outlined very specifically the master plan, that the goal is to eliminate the portables. I think until Dr. Adley has time to assess and Dennis continues to do his work, and we know we're down the path of building a new school, and the immediate ripple effect is to eliminate those portables. But I think to the point of this is the annual goal, I would rather see it expanded in terms of ongoing... Not the right word, ongoing updates to the Facilities Master Plan in adherence with the broader goals of the district.
My concern is putting portables in, and I am 100% committed to removing portables. I'm not sure you can accomplish that goal in a year, but I do think you can accomplish Duke's goal. You can continue to work it to make it a priority, if you want to put it broadly. But I'm not sure within a year we're gonna have a solution to portables as much as we are going to have a commitment to a strategic plan. And part of that strategic plan or that capital plan is going to incorporate eliminating portables.
The other thing, the other thing that I would just throw out there, and it's way early in the process, but at the end of the day, as we go through the process of building the Ox Ridge School, it is incredibly tight site, and it may come down to a phased project, and we may need portables or we may need swing space.
Right.
So, I think broadly to define the elimination of portables, which we all agree to and we all want, versus just the ongoing strategic master plan that I think we have to invest in is probably a better way to do it.
An option is to add a fourth action, a fourth bullet, and Dr. Adley, I don't know if you agree, but just it could be a review of the capital implications.
Oh, I think I think that's one of them.
I think something broadly like that.
I think we could do that.
And you know, Mike Lynch is good with this, but at the end of the day, we should look at, at what point in time do we need to spend X amount of dollars to update the master plan? Those are three- to five-year plans. That's something that I think Dennis has on his table to look at as to when do we invest in the next master plan that gives an overview of each of our facilities as they are today and then gives us recommendations for those facilities going forward, which has driven Mike's capital plan also.
Well, that can be put as a goal, you know, that is a goal as opposed to an action step. I just, and it doesn't have to be done next year. It's not, I don't think anybody has this illusion, we're gonna have all the portables gone by next year. It could be the conversation, the, what are the steps we're going to take to get to there over the next two years because we can continue into 2021.
Mr. Brown.
I would just think that the goal stated, ensure the safety and security is broad enough.
You put it there too, yeah.
That we could get there. I also would agree with Ms. McComber that we, Mrs. McComber, we could add a fourth line item if we felt the need. But I think we're gonna look at security on all of the buildings and all the properties and all the traffic, whether that be on foot or any other access, then I don't know why we wouldn't look at the overall side plan.
So, someone give me some recommendations on language, and we can go from there.
Well, does Dr. Adley have a thought? I mean, I'm open to...
Honestly, I think the work, just the ongoing work of the master plan, right? The master facilities plan to review that, contribute to that, bring it to the next step, will accomplish what I think is what you want to accomplish or asking, and I think it's reasonable. Because they're all gonna be part of that. They're gonna be part of the safety, and they're gonna be part of that plan.
So, is that...
Are you worried specifically about, sorry, sorry.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, is that, I feel like Duke and I have said that that satisfies our concern because we feel like portables are in there, but I want to give everyone the chance. Does language to that effect satisfy? Mrs. Stein.
Mr. Brown.
I would propose a striking entry level. So, it would read, review the need for additional security across all schools. And I would strike the bullet to review traffic usage and patterns, so believing action items cost and consultation. And I think we're broad enough that we could do everything.
So, not delineate, just leave it broad.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that's kind of why we're picking traffic and we're not looking at portables. So, why are we picking one over the other?
So, you're removing your action steps.
Okay.
Correct.
You're removing the bullet point.
And then you keep it broad enough. I'm comfortable with that as well.
So, I would make a motion to do so.
All right, I'll second.
If you guys are okay trusting that they'll do it.
Well, it was only when I saw dissension. If I see a general agreement with that, then I think we can do it.
If you guys are okay, we can move on and add...
Amendment, but I think Dave needs to say it again.
Sorry, without quoting him.
Yes, I think the only thing is if we don't have general agreement, I think what Dave is suggesting meets Duke and I's concern also, so that can remain general agreement. Is there anyone who doesn't agree with that change? Then we have to put it to a vote. So, Mr. Burke, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. McComber, are you comfortable with that? Mrs. McComber, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, and thank you. I think it's a great idea.
All right. Way to go, Dave.
Did someone capture that? So, I just want to be clear, the action slip is one word, I mean, one sentence. Review the need for additional security across all schools, period.
Yes, thank you.
And the first bullet is going to be removed.
I removed.
We're removing all the bullets. Oh. Well, determine cause, consult with other town bodies, I think is fine.
The question is...
I don't have an issue with the other two.
I would remove all the bullets. And I would leave it blank because it's broad enough then that we can review all the steps. We're not precluding any of those. I mean, we have to determine the cost.
I like the steps, the other steps. I thought you were, other town bodies, I take that to mean you're talking with the police department, and I think that's an important message to the community, but my vote...
That's a given.
But we put it in there, why would we take it out?
Well, we still got the other one. So, I think it remains broad enough. Is there anyone who feels strongly that only the first one be removed? I appreciate that we want to get it right, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to over... Are we comfortable? Dave comfortable?
I think too, there'll be, there'll be a lot of lessons learned and a lot of good information that will come out of the security with the Ox Ridge build.
And I'd like to give Dr. Adley the time to really flush this out.
I mean, I think this is very important, and I think it is broad. It can go in a lot of different directions, so maybe it would be best just to leave it broad, but definitely on the agenda as something we want to focus on the upcoming year.
I'd agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. McComber, are you comfortable with that? Or no, removing the steps and but keeping it broad?
You're gonna remove the bullets under action steps?
Mrs. McComber.
So, I know our person words at this point, but I think one of the difficulties that we sometimes run into is if we just say, review the need, then we haven't committed to any sort of action. And so, I think that's where we, I think at a minimum, want some sort of plan to come out of this.
So, I think, my understanding, Dr. Adley, please correct me, is that that is an essential part to the strategic plan, right? I mean, security going forward is going to be an essential part, and therefore, giving Dr. Adley at least the 90 days to come back to us with his thought and what he's gathered would help inform this goal without hemming us in. I happen to 100% agree, like, review traffic usage and patterns is far too specific for me. I think, let's leave it broad, let's let Dr. Adley come back to us 90 days. We're gonna be part of the strategic plan process, as will other constituents, and that will inform this almost most important of goals.
So, I think if you're comfortable, we're expecting you to come back with all the details and the weeds.
Yeah, that.
I mean, sometimes, what's a goal and what's an action step can get messy.
Often, these are confused, goals and action steps.
And in fairness to you, I do agree, like, if you take out the bullets, it's basically saying the same thing as the goal's saying.
Right.
But if you're happy with that, it's not gonna change what I'm gonna do, so I can live with that too.
Okay. Everyone happy or not happy? We're good with the amendment? All right, we'll move on. Technology. Unless anyone had anything else there? Technology. Seeing none? Okay, so, with that, can I entertain a motion to approve the board, the district goals and objectives for 2019, 2020 as amended this evening? Mr. Burke? Mr. Deneen, all in favor? And that is unanimous? Thank you. We'll move on. I'm sorry, my computer's getting very sleepy tonight. We'll move on to the further discussion and possible action on the proposed responsibility for review on a yearly basis of the board responsibilities. I didn't hear back from anyone that they have any amendments to what has stood in the past as our responsibilities. Does anyone have any questions on that? Seeing none, can I move for a motion to approve the board responsibilities as outlined in the memo? Mrs. McComber? A second, please. Mr. Burke? All in favor? That is unanimous. All right, and we will move on to further discussion and action on the revised proposed schedule for the 2019, 2020 regular Board of Education meetings. Dr. Adley.
So, we did have a discussion about this previously. One of the dates that was, that's been amended as discussed at the last meeting, and there was only a question around September 10th, whether that was gonna be a free date or not, and that can, that's okay, we've checked that out, so it's ready to be approved as presented.
So, just a reminder, once we approve this, any meeting dates we have to change become special meetings. So, any questions on the schedule? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's schedule for 2019, 2020 regular meetings? Mr. Deneen? Second? Mr. Burke? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And Mrs. Stein, a verbal update on staffing for the 2019, 2020 years.
So, we're in the same position that Dr. Adley informed you of on Friday. We have one more classroom teacher to hire at homes. It was the very last-minute resignation, and we are passing around a revised Personnel Action Report because since we sent the agenda out on Friday, we did have that other, a couple of other resignations, and we hired four or so more people.
Thank you. Get it around and give everyone a chance to review. And may I have a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report dated August 27th, 2019? Mr. Burke? And Mr. Deneen? All in favor? I'm almost done. Wait, hang on. All in favor? Mrs. McComber, are you ready to vote, or do you have...
Give me a moment.
That is unanimous? All righty.
May I have a comment?
Yes.
Chairman, I just, at some point, I would like to discuss with the board, it doesn't have to be now, but just the nature of this document, because it can be very, very confusing, both legally and... And I'm sitting here as a parent, I'm going, did we not already appoint the principal? Did we not, like, are we gonna take it back? It gets, it gets very, very confusing. So, at some point, it doesn't have to be, at some point, I'd just like the opportunity to reflect on that process. That's all.
We'll put it on for a future meeting. Thank you. We will move on to the appointment of an impartial hearing officer for student disciplinary matters for the 2019, 2020 school year as they arise. As a reminder, we do this yearly. This is the appointment of our hearing officer in discipline cases. Boards can hear them. About two-thirds of the towns in Connecticut appoint a hearing officer, and especially in small towns where, you know, sometimes people want to give their neighbors the chance to not be heard by nine local members, they go to a hearing officer. So, this is just an annual reappointment of our hearing officer. Any questions? May I have a motion to approve our hearing officer for student disciplinary matters as outlined in the memo dated August 27th, 2019 in your board packet? Mr. Brown? So, moves? A second? Mrs. McComber? All in favor? That is unanimous. Item C under this is much the same. Dr. Adley, your name is next to these, not mine, so I'll let you do this one. But it is discussion impossible action to delegate an appointed hearing officer for the responsibility of hearing expulsion, expungement requests for the hearing and for hearing school accommodation appeals, including transportation appeals as provided by statute. Dr. Adley, unless you want me in there.
I think you're covered. It's fine.
So, again, this is our annual renewal of this expulsion, expungement. If we were not part of the decision, nor did we know about the decision to expel, why would we be part of the expungement process? And then, parents have the right to make appeals regarding transportation as by state statute and for similar reasons, we have appointed a hearing officer in the past, so.
Just a point of information. Have we historically done this second and for hearing school accommodations appeals? I don't recall that language, but it could be my memory.
That's, that appears to be what the historical records would show that we've done, yes?
I can tell you based off my memory that we have done, I know we've done expulsion and transportation hearing. I would have to check.
You've absolutely, you've definitely done expungement records. You've definitely done that too.
It's the, it's the school, school accommodations I don't recall, but...
So, the question is, what is the historical record on that? Mrs. Stein is looking.
Just curious.
It's okay. She's a very good secretary. Basically, the goal here is to take private student matters, and while they can, in very rare cases, come to the board, give families the privacy of a hearing officer. Was it last year?
Yeah, our wording was different last year.
Discussion on possible action on delegate expulsion, expungement decisions. And we added transportation later in the year.
Yeah, we did it later.
Up to you if you'd like to modify. I don't have the history right in front of us. So, if you're more comfortable modifying, I'm happy to wait.
Then, perhaps, we could just hear a little bit about it. I just don't recall voting on this before. So, I think it certainly makes sense to give students privacy, but... So I think it certainly makes sense to give students privacy, but, or families.
Does anyone want to talk about what hearing a school accommodation appeal would be? What that hearing would be?
It could be, it could be a transportation thing if, I don't want to bring that up right now since we're just talking about transportation at the start of the school year, but it could be that someone doesn't think that the transportation that we're providing, where and how we're doing it is appropriate and yet, let's say, we say that it's, it is, it's in line with, it's in line with the board policy and so on. If they don't agree with that, there's a process to go through, an appeal process.
To my knowledge, that this may also include residency concerns? Less so educational accommodations and learning accommodations?
Doesn't sound like learning accommodations.
I believe it has to do with residency concerns, but I can look into it if you're more comfortable.
Just want to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
But it's not accommodation in the sense that we use the word for special education. It's accommodation in the sense that we use it for transportation.
Correct, yes, yes, that's true. And for the record, just that the board is appointing a new hearing officer here.
Yeah, it's in the.
Thank you.
So I believe there are instances at times where the superintendent can make a decision, let's say someone's a senior in a high school, and if the superintendent, someone wanted to appeal that decision, they have the right to come to the board. And so again, that would be a student matter and would we want to lump it in? But you're right, not how we talk about learning accommodations. That would not, that has its own process. So I'll make a motion to approve, if anyone would like to make a motion to amend, they can do so after. So may I have a motion to approve the appointing a hearing officer for the responsibility of hearing expulsion, expungement requests, hearing school accommodation appeals and including transportation appeals as provided by statute? Mr. Burke, and the second? The second? Mr. Dunneen, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Any public comment this evening? Wow, guys. I don't think this has ever happened. All right, well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. McCammon and Mrs. McCammon and Mrs. McCammon, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all very much. This evening we are adjourned. I mean, my mic's off. I've never seen y'all since I came.